This is coming through Water, Water Pollution Control. And it is for funding that's needed to cover uniform costs. Mr. James.
Yes, I'll use a little bit of time to our superintendent Mike Nixon to discuss this.
Mr. Chairman, members of council. Going through our accounts, looking to make sure we get through the end of the year, it looked like we were going to be short in the uniform account. And it was slightly under budgeted and looking at it, and we've had a few more damaged uniforms this year that have had to be replaced. In the work we do, we get into sludge, we get into a lot of nasty things. So their clothes sometimes get very stained and very ripped and torn. So we've had to prematurely replace some uniforms for employees so that they look presentable when they're out on the street. So this should get us through the end of the year. And two readings will be fine.
Okay. Any questions around the table for Mr. Nixon?
This will be the first of two readings.
And I have Mrs. Teener as your second.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
The next resolution is 111-20. This is coming through Public Works. And this resolution covers a new unemployment line item. Mr. Schoonover.
Yeah, this, just, we were informed that there was an unemployment claim retroactive to the beginning of September that we needed to cover. So this is to increase and decrease from those funds we can pay.
Any questions for me? Yes, Becky.
So this isn't coming out of the general fund?
No, it's coming out of Transit's budget.
Okay. Because I know we gave them, what, 75 out of the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Want to switch Schoonover? I'm showing either second, and I'm showing one.
Yes, they need suspension on that.
Next resolution is 112-20. This is coming through IT Telecom. Mr. Stotin.
Wow, I have a piece of legislation. [laughter] This is the annual payment to Civic Plus, who basically, I believe, is our website and internet provider. Apparently Donna tried to play, pay this with a credit card, but we don't pay back credit card or, or they, you know, we don't, we don't pay a credit card upcharge. So therefore, we have to kind of go back and pay them, pay them by check. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Yes, you do. We didn't want to pay the extra charge. Right, that's right. We don't want to pay 5% over. So we went back and said, give us our money back on the credit card and we'll send you a check. So that's what we're doing. We need, this need to be rushed through.
Motion, extension.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And include the vent and out because we'll need that because of the amount.
Oh, my favorite. So Cory, I think you're on that committee, aren't you?
I am.
Well, good. Would you please second?
I can do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Actually, I had made less than a second for that.
You know, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Somebody did.
Well, fine, you guys want to fight it out? I'm already, you guys want to hop down there and have a wrestling match or?
Let's say whatever. I don't want to fight with Teresa, so whatever makes it easier.
I honestly don't care.
Teresa always wins.
Can you put Tom James on there?
Teresa always wins.
Yeah, I was picking how I do for everybody else, odds and evens.
Hey, Tom, would you second this for us? You're a man.
Sorry.
But you know what? I was gonna, I was gonna ask for suspension on those two Edie Road ordinances today, but we're gonna make you read those three times.
That's all right. I can say the pronunciations very well now.
All right. Boy, you've only read them 68 times.
I know.
Okay, you've lost control.
Apparently I did.
All my fault.
That's what you get for having a piece of legislation.
He's out of practice.
Wagging my tail over here and everything.
Okay. And in the agenda, there's an extra resolution that I think I neglected to.
The number should be 106-20, I believe.
No, I think, I don't think it's supposed to be in this agenda. I think I forgot to delete it. So we'll go to ordinance. Okay. Are there any other resolutions before we move on to ordinances? Temporary ordinance 23-20, as well as 24-20. I'm going to defer to Mr. Stotin.
Well, these are the annual financing ordinances for the Edie Road TIF. All right? And these are funds that the, that the developers provided for the completion of the construction and are repaid using funds from the TIF and the developers. No city monies involved in the TIF. We have to get through this process every year. So are we suspending our three readings or?
I'm showing three readings. And I have Mrs. Bobbitt on 23-20, and you on 24-20 for second.
Perfect.
Okay. Any questions on those two ordinances? All right. Other discussion items. Do we have any departmental updates tonight? Chief Ward making way with the podium.
It's not really an update, but the new truck's in. Just see the engine company walking in the hallway here. So after your meeting here and your break, if you'd like to come out and take a look at that, that truck, you're more than welcome. We can give you a quick tour. Captain Schultz is on duty.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, Chief Ward, we have a new lieutenant here with us as well. I can't believe you did not take that opportunity to mention that.
Yeah, kind of exciting times there. This is Lieutenant Cory Snook. He's been on about 15 years. He's a local fella. He came from Genoa Township specifically to work for his hometown, and we're very proud of him. He's been very active with the promotion of this upcoming levy, and we're really looking forward to good things from him.
Yes.
I wasn't prepared to say a speech, so I'm not going to, but hello.
Welcome to Lancaster.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other departmental updates? Awesome. I will turn it over to President Oul for tonight's meeting.
We're all set. I want to go see the truck.
All right, awesome. Any other items for finance? One once, one twice. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. I'm the fastest.
That's pretty close. Very good. The regular meeting of Lancer City Council will begin precisely at 6:30.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
Swing into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
If you're looking for the best selection of clean, quality used vehicles, look no further than the Carriage Company. You'll feel secure with your purchase knowing all vehicles undergo an extensive safety and service check prior to the sale. And all vehicles can be viewed online at carriagecompany.com. The Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster, and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you once again for this day, for your many, many blessings. Lord, we thank you today for the opportunity and privilege to serve. As we go about the work set before us today, may you lead, guide, and direct us. May we do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Lancaster. We ask in Jesus's name, amen. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Here.
Mrs. Downhour.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Matlin.
Here.
Mr. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Schoonover.
Here.
Mr. Stotin.
Here.
And Mrs. Teener.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening, reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated September 28th, 2020.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated September 30th, 2020 regarding third quarter 2020 voting permit report submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated October 1st, 2020 regarding service committee agenda submitted by Mrs. Teener. Email dated October 7th, 2020 regarding Public Works Committee Agenda submitted by Mr. Schoonover. And finally, an email dated October 12th, 2020 regarding Finance Committee Agenda submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There is one. Notice the legislative authority of a transfer of a liquor license from CW Doughboys LLC Doing Business as Bar located at first floor and basement 434 North Columbus Street, Ohio to Stu's Place LLC Doing Business as Stu's Place located at first floor and basement 434 North Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tonight, we are pleased to have a special presentation, and we want to welcome Ms. Nixon-Stotin to the podium as well as Mayor Dave Scheffler for tonight's presentation.
Well, good evening, members of council. And if you would bear with me, I have a proclamation which I'm going to present to Mrs. Stotin. And it's very small print, so, in single space, so.
Take your time.
Cut me off at five minutes.
I absolutely will.
Whereas domestic violence is a crime in Ohio and includes physical assault, sexual abuse, and stalking, whereas emotional, psychological, spiritual, and financial abuses are often difficult to prove, they are forms of abuse and identified as forms of domestic violence. And whereas an estimated one in three women will face domestic abuse in their lifetimes, and whereas domestic violence remains a pervasive issue across Fairfield County, Ohio, the United States, and the world with implications for personal and community health, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socio-economic status, and whereas research shows that by creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and care for one another can reduce incidence of domestic violence, and whereas every day in Fairfield County, individuals and organizations play a part in supporting impacted, in supporting people impacted by domestic violence, providing services including therapeutic, legal, educational, housing, advocacy, and medical services, and whereas children deserve to see their parents in a safe, comfortable place free from any harmful factors. Strong families are a key to promising future for everyone, and whereas information about services can be found at www.lancasterlh.org, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for a community to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the White House as they provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, David Scheffler, Mayor of the City of Lancaster, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Introduce all City of Lancaster residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact of domestic violence in our community. And Mrs. Stotin is the Executive Director of the White House, which does a lot of wonderful work in the domestic violence area, and I would like to present this to her.
Thank you very, very much.
Congratulations.
Just real quick, I want to thank the mayor and, of course, all of city council for the proclamation, and just share a couple of things with you. Certainly, our goal is to get the victims and their kiddos back on their feet. But we want them to be able to experience that healthy lifestyle that perhaps it's been years since they've had the opportunity to do. And sitting around the room, when you look, one in four women and one in nine men experience domestic violence. Not every domestic violence shelter can take men. We're blessed. We have a shelter that has six individual units. They each have their own bathroom, their own kitchenette, so we are able to help men as well. It's fewer cases, clearly, but we are able to do that. And I just want to throw a couple of statistics at you. You know, everybody's talking about COVID has had effects on a lot of areas. Clearly, it has had an effect on the shelter side of what we do. Throughout, from March through the end of our fiscal year, which is the end of June, we ended up providing 3,383 nights of shelter as compared to FY19, which was 4,951. So we saw a huge impact. We did have people calling. We had people being honest. They didn't know if they would want to stay with a monster they knew or come to the monster they didn't know because they weren't so sure that they could be free of germs. We can do everything in our power to let them know that the shelter's never been cleaner, but folks have to go with, with their gut and what they feel is best. So please know we're there. Anybody that you know of, we all come in contact with folks. They simply call the shelter line, and we'll be able to help them. And I would like to thank my favorite cereal deliverer. So basically, we have, we buy food in bulk. And whenever Becky sees a sale, I get a call, and she stops by and drops off packages of name brand cereal, and she becomes the hero for as long as that cereal lasts. So thank you very much for always thinking of us.
Try to keep it away from him. That's the problem. That's why I take it there usually.
Well, you know, sadly, when I hear that he's got Lucky Charms and they're magically delicious, I think that he, you did get his attention, so.
Well, I think he's a boss.
Yes. So thank you all very much. And Tom, thank you for surprising me and wearing purple. He got the memo. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Stotin.
And I imagine, you know, in addition to all the great work that you do in our community, you know, being somehow put up for sainthood regarding the person that you spend most of your time with is probably something we need to consider as well, and so.
Maybe a proclamation for that, right?
A proclamation for that, yes. But thank you for what you do.
I'll come back next month for that.
Okay, great. We'll have it ready. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Are there any petitions or memorials this evening?
There are none to be presented.
During this time at Lancaster City Council, we set time aside to allow the voters and taxpayers of the city to address city council on any item or issue that they would like. If you are a voter and taxpayer of the city, we invite you at this time to come forward. State your name and address for the record and record the same on the clipboard that is at the podium. We'll ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. We'll also note that while at a different time during the meeting, city council may choose to respond to your comments, they will not do so during this portion of the meeting. With that, is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, sir?
I'm not signed in. Would you prefer I did that?
You can do it at the end.
Okay.
Yep.
My name is Alex Gaddis, and I live at 527 Goodwin Avenue. At a Lancaster City Council meeting six weeks ago, Councilwoman Teener made disparaging and frankly out of place comments about white privilege just days before standing downtown with Proud Boys and citizens who had been threatening my colleagues and me for months for expressing our First Amendment rights. At a Lancaster City Council meeting four weeks ago, my colleagues addressed these issues to the council. Councilwoman Teener was kind enough to respond to their concerns immediately, although I wouldn't say her response spoke directly to all the issues brought forth. An attempt was made to explain them away. The rest of the council jumped to her defense, also mostly without speaking directly to our concerns, but by citing Ms. Teener's general commitment to her community despite many disagreements on how to go about improving it. At a Lancaster City Council meeting two weeks ago, my colleagues tried to redress these concerns by explaining what was wrong with the council's response at the meeting prior. This time, aside from a much appreciated but brief discussion instigated by Councilman Orman Hall, there was no response. Despite our direct solicitation, Councilwoman Teener simply opted not to respond. I'm not here to reiterate those ongoing concerns. Others are, but I would like to use my time to address the dismissive and disrespectful nature of the responses we've received so far, or lack thereof. A power distance exists between the people who speak at this podium and those of you sitting to face it. You can access resources and complete projects that we cannot. I don't have to explain to you what that means. You're aware of that power distance. You leverage it in your favor whenever possible because that's what people with power do. One instance of that leveraging was Ms. Teener's decision to provide us no response last week, two weeks ago, excuse me. It was a late night, and members of the council seemed tired. I would empathize with that if four of us who were not obligated or paid to be here remained for the duration of the meeting to hear her speak. This was a prototypical power move and one that might have worked if we were less dedicated to our community. I assume most, if not all, of you would agree with the platitude that more people should be engaged in improving their communities. When you have the opportunity, please correct me if I'm wrong about that. I assume Ms. Teener herself would agree that more community engagement would simplify the completion of the numerous projects she allegedly envisions for her ward. We are here to engage to the best of our ability with no institutional power, and you've made it clear that our engagement is not respected enough to even warrant a response. But Ms. Teener is not responsible for this alone. This is a strategy policymakers at all levels use frequently. Don't answer the questions asked, answer the ones you wish you were asked, or don't answer at all. Intentionally or not, other members of the council deployed this tactic four weeks ago in their defense of Ms. Teener. We didn't attack Ms. Teener's character and never intended to. We had not suggested that she was uncommitted to her community, yet these were overwhelmingly the reassurances we received. Not one member of the council joined us in insisting that Ms. Teener apologize for her mistakes. As is clear from the silence two weeks ago, we don't have the power to make her address anything. Council members do have leverage in that department, but have mostly leveraged their power to minimize our concerns instead. We don't need to kid ourselves with altruism. What has transpired over the last two months in these meetings is what happens in rooms like these all over the country. Class solidarity has been expressed. If my suggesting this irks you, I think you're in denial. I don't think any of you take a dismissive posture maliciously. I think it's natural. I think you feel safest in doing so, and it is in your best interest. But your interests are not ours, and you are not elected to protect your interests. Your power, your access to resources is not extended to us even in the simplest, most inconsequential of ways, like requesting an apology, because you are all inclined to prioritize the protection of your peers over addressing the concerns of your constituents. Within these power dynamics lie the grand philosophical quandary of representative democracy, and we won't resolve that universal issue in this meeting hall. One thing of which I am certain, those resolutions are not on us. We don't have any power. We cannot mend distrust between our community and its leaders, and I am coming to lose trust in my leaders. And that is not my fault. You have an opportunity that many rural city councils do not, a coalition of citizens with no power who still give a damn. And if you'd like to use this opportunity to build real inroads, please show us that you hear the concerns of my fellow citizens in this meeting and in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Gaddis, is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening?
I live at 527 Goodwin Avenue. We ask for the city, specifically Ms. Becky Teener, but also the rest of all of you, to publicly denounce hate groups and white supremacy. You haven't done that. Shame on you. I know that you say prayer at the opening of these meetings, so I hope that you could hear these words I'm going to share from Isaiah, Chapter 1, verses 15 through 17. "When you spread out your hands in prayer, I hide my eyes from you. Even when you offer many prayers, I am not listening. Your hands are full of blood. Wash and make yourselves clean. Take your evil deeds out of my sight. Stop doing wrong. Learn to do right. Seek justice. Defend the oppressed. Take up the cause of the fatherless and plead the case of the widow." Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight?
My name is Jamie Brown. I live at 527 Goodwin Avenue. Revelation, Chapter 3, verses 15 and 16. I'm going to get a little off cuff here. Born and raised in Lancaster. My dad raised me an evangelical Christian. That shapes my worldview, that shapes my morality. And most of my adult life has been dealing with the contention between how I was raised and how I saw things play out in the society I find myself in. And a lot of that contention is between myself and my dad. I've mentioned before, my dad contracted COVID. He is systemically, he's every statistic, you know, when we're considering poverty and the ill effects it has, you know, generationally. And I, you know, have come to a place where I actually believe, you know, there's some kind of mystical existential story playing out because he should have died a few times, and he's alive. And so a lot of the contention I have with my faith versus what I see in society, I think it's just my cross to carry. And so I speak, I speak these next words with sincere motive of a Christian who seeks to speak to other Christian sympathizers. of a Christian who seeks to speak to other Christian sympathizers. The difference between what we say and what we do. And so, that's the contextualized Revelation, Chapter 3, verses 15 and 16. "I know your deeds, that you are neither cold nor hot. I wish that you were either one of those things. So because you are lukewarm, you're neither hot nor cold, I am about to spit you out of my mouth." We ask the city, specifically Becky Teener, but all of you, to publicly denounce hate groups and white supremacy. That was a simple task. You haven't done that yet. Wow. Wow. There are people who are angry. They're angry for a reason. We are a group of people who've worked with the lighthouse before. You know there is pain and suffering here. We see it. But systemically speaking, other people have access to services in a hierarchy, as Alex addressed. We, we live in a system where there is a disparity. And we don't need to, we don't need to explain it. The data's there. We ask simple things. They are simple. Denounce hate groups and white supremacy. I would be remiss to point out the moment we've shared in the last few months. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Are there reports of standing committees?
There are three. Finance Committee meeting dated September 28th, 2020, submitted by Mrs. Downhour. Service Committee meeting minutes for February 7th, 2020, and June 5th, 2020, submitted by Mrs. Teener. And finally, the Public Works Committee meeting minutes dated October 9th, 2020, submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file the reports as standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports as standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
There are no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of temporary resolution 97-20.
A resolution authorizing the law director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Pickerington for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the city of Pickerington within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 97-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 97-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, thank you. Um, this is an annual piece that we do every year and it allows us to get essentially paid for prosecuting cases in Pickerington and Reynoldsburg, Pickerington and Reynoldsburg, and the 98-20 is for Reynoldsburg. So it's going to be the same story for that one.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Yes, Ms. Teener?
Yeah, how many, how long have we been doing, just, just asking? Because it seems like we have ever since I've been on. How many?
Yeah, it's been 20-plus years.
Has it been that long? Okay.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Stotin.
I think, Lord, we're required to prosecute these cases on their behalf. We, is that correct?
Uh, no, no. Actually, my responsibility for prosecution statutorily would lie in the city of Lancaster and the unincorporated areas of the county. So then what I do is I basically do a contract with the commissioners that covers all the villages throughout the county, and then of course, the city of Pickerington and the city of Reynoldsburg. I can track with them to do it, do it for them as well. So.
Okay. So it's the unincorporated areas?
Yes.
Got you. Thank you.
And Mr. Alama, if I'm remembering right, the reason we're not seeing the commissioners on here is because we did a multi-year contract with them last year, right?
That is correct. Yes, it'll be up next year.
Very good. Further questions or discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 97-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 98-20.
A resolution authorizing the law director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Reynoldsburg for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the city of Reynoldsburg within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stotin.
Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 98-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 98-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour. Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 98-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 99-20.
A resolution scheduling Lancaster City Council meetings for 2021, offered by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a completely perfunctory resolution that establishes our meeting agenda for next year. I don't know that I have anything additional that is relevant to add. I would just suggest that we move forward.
What's your pleasure, Dana?
I would, I would like to, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 99-20.
Second. A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 99-20. Further discussion, Mr. Hall?
Not, not at this time.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 99-20 passes nine to zero. We now have second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 100-20.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to waive the request for qualifications and negotiate a contract for planning and design of the expansion of the Upper Hocking Water Pollution Control Facility and related sewers and pump stations, and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. James, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Yes, we've discussed this in the last meeting, Finance Committee meeting, on the previous council meeting. This basically is to authorize the contract with Arcatis, which is the company that actually designed the Upper Hocking Water Pollution Control Facility. And right now, as they make sense to deal with them rather than trying to go out for bid on this, so at this time, I'm going to ask that we consider the passage of this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. James. What's your pleasure?
So having said that, Mr. President, I would like to at this time make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of resolution temporarily numbered 100-20.
Second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading. Temporary resolution 100-20. Discussion, Mr. James?
Nothing further?
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Yes, Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon our written record. Temporary, temporary ordinance numbered 100-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 100-20. Mr. James?
No further explanation.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 100-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 104-20.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application for round 35 grant funding to the Ohio Public Works Commission, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 104-20. Temporary resolution 106-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriation with the county auditor in the Water Pollution Control Fund 6004, offered by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
This particular resolution is asking for an approximate amount of $200,000 to help clean out some of the tanks in preparation for the refurbishment of the Lawrence Street wastewater facility. We've discussed this in previous Finance Committee meetings, and at this time, Mr. President, I would like to make the motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporarily resolution numbered 106-20.
Second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 106-20. Discussion, Mr. James?
Just a little bit more discussion. We were able to contract with the contractor that's doing all the wastewater, I should say, all the dewatering and land application of the materials. They've actually already taken out 600 dry tons from one of the tanks. And the second tank does not appear to have quite as much material in it. So in past, in a past life, when I was in the industrial cleaning business, I would have bid this particular project at $1.5 million, which is what they actually had a competing bid for. So with that explanation, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. James. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion to pass and gross and enter upon our written record. Temporary resolution numbered 106-20.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 106-20. Mr. James?
Nothing further on it.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 106-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 107-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the L.D.O. Fund 2008 and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 107-20. Temporary resolution 109-20.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the local coronavirus relief fund 2050, amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 109-20.
Second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 109-20. Ms. Downhour?
I will save it for later.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution is 109-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 109-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, thank you. This resolution is so that we can receive funds from the CARES Act and make sure that they get appropriately.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 109-20 passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 110-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Water Pollution Control Fund 6004, offered by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Yes, this will be the first of two readings of this resolution.
First two readings, temporary resolution 110-20. Temporary resolution 111-20.
A resolution to decrease and increase appropriations in the Transit Fund 2021, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary resolution 111-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 111-20. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Not at this time.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 111-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 111-20. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Just briefly, this is to create a line item in transit's budget to, yeah, appropriate funds to the unemployment line and so we can pay a recent unemployment claim.
Further discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
Just want to add, it's all grant funded, correct? All grant funded. No general fund money.
That's correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 111-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 112-20.
A resolution to approve the issuance of one then and now certificate needed for the payment of an invoice received prior to the issuance of a purchase order, offered by Mr. Stotin, seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make the motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporary 112-20.
Now, no one knows who seconded it after we had that discussion earlier. Mr. James, it's all you.
I'm sorry. I'll second that.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution one twelve dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We're suspending on this tonight is because we wanted to pay our website provider with a credit card but discovered after the fact that they charge a five percent surcharge for that privilege. Therefore, we rescinded the credit card charge and now offered to pay them with a check, which then requires a then and now certificate. So, timing being of the essence, I'm asking for suspension.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution temporary one twelve twenty.
Mr. James?
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution one twelve dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
No, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution one twelve dash twenty passes nine to zero. Are there further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council tonight? If not, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the second reading of temporary ordinance eighteen dash twenty.
An ordinance to accept the final plat for the overlooked section two, offered by Mr. Matlin, seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Matlin?
Second of third reading.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance eighteen dash twenty. Temporary ordinance nineteen dash twenty.
An ordinance to accept the replat of Wesley Woods subdivision phase two, offered by Mr. Matlin, seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Matlin?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered nineteen twenty.
Second. We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance nineteen dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. Matlin?
I'll save it.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
temporary ordinance nineteen dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance twenty dash twenty.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of one million eighty thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the renovation of an existing building for use by the city's municipal court, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency, offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mr. Stoughton.
Ms. Downhour?
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary ordinance twenty dash twenty. Temporary ordinance twenty one dash twenty.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement to purchase approximately zero point one four acres, more or less, of real property identified as parcel number zero five three five one one eight zero zero zero, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty one dash twenty. Temporary ordinance twenty two dash twenty.
An ordinance regarding the dissolution of the Lancaster area community improvement corporation, Lancaster C I C, and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered twenty two dash twenty.
Second. A motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty two dash twenty. Mr. McDaniel?
I'll save it.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty two dash twenty passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on temporary ordinance twenty three dash twenty.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount of nine hundred sixty eight thousand forty four dollars and eighty cents to pay costs of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, whitening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency, offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour?
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty three dash twenty. Temporary ordinance twenty four dash twenty.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a revenue note in the aggregate principal amount of three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand two hundred sixty four dollars and eighteen cents to reimburse Flagstar Bank F S B for a drawn a letter of credit in connection with the cost of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, whitening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities and installing sidewalk traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency, offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mr. Stoughton.
Ms. Downhour?
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty four dash twenty. Are there any further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we have two pieces of tabled legislation. Is there any action on tabled legislation tonight?
Stand as is right now.
Very good. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Is there any new business this evening? Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, just real quickly. In my mind, the most important part of our meeting is the section where we solicit and allow citizens to dress a body. I would like to let our guest tonight know that I appreciate their determination, and I would also like to let them know that we will, that the Law Committee will be deliberating on their request to formally denounce hate groups in our community at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there anyone else who has new business this evening? Yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
So, for those of you that are still here, I know a couple of you have left. I appreciate Mr. Brown saying that his, telling us about his father's bout with COVID, and a miracle did happen with him. I've had miracles happen in my life also, not with COVID. So, you know, when he says he's a Christian, there's a lot of other people in this room that are also Christians. We might not always be, we might not all be Democrats, we might not all be Republicans, but there's a lot of people sitting in this room that do believe in God and do believe in miracles. I wanted to make certain, I mean, I thought I was pretty well forward the first evening that I spoke. I am against any hate group, I am against any white supremacy group. If I need, if you need me to write you down something on a piece of paper and sign my name to it, that's my life. I don't believe in hate. So, don't put my name on any list that I'm for any of those groups. I think, I know myself, the evening when I spoke, I'm not going to say that I spoke up for Mrs. Teener. I spoke and told you what she told me she was doing there that evening. As we witness here tonight, she gives cereal to the lighthouse group. She's a good, I mean, from my standard, she's a good person from what I know of her. You'll have to talk to her about white supremacy and, you know, go further with that. But Melody Bobbitt is against any white supremacy. I'm glad that Orman said that he would get a group together, get the group, the law group together. I'm sure every one of us around the table, if it's something that we can sign, we will sign. If any, my name, my number's published out there on Google. Still have a landline. If any of you want to call me and talk to me, feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Anyone else have? Mr. Schoonover?
I was a little distracted during the meeting as I was sitting here, you know, thinking about what Alex and Stephanie and Jamie said. I wrote, "Denounce hate groups, white supremacy with a star." That's, that's easy. That's not a problem. I, I don't support those groups, I don't support hate in general. I think this forum is sometimes hard for us to maybe respond to. I mean, we, as public servants, you know, whether we want it or not, our, our information is, is out there. So, you guys can reach out to us at any time. And I, I do spend a lot of time preparing for this stuff. I think more so for myself, so I don't look stupid when I'm trying to say something or not know a piece of legislation. So, there's a lot, I know for me, there's a lot running through my mind. So, when, you know, we have someone address us, it's hard for me to focus on all the pieces that we're going through, plus form a response to, to those of you that want one. And, and I think too, in this day and age, it's hard to, to sit up here and, and throw out anything. Some people will take it out of context, some people might turn it the other way around. Everyone gets offended so easily that maybe we don't want to stick our neck out there in this particular forum. Maybe we would rather discuss it individually or whatever. And you guys quoted Bible verses, I mean, and, and alluded to the fact that we say a prayer. We actually say the prayer before we adjourn, or before we even start the meeting, because if I remember correctly, we do that because saying a prayer during the city council meeting was offensive to some people. So, I believe as a body, we say it before we even start the meeting. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So, you know, and it's at least not gotten to, you know, so I noticed, and so I would ask back, and I would rather ask and have a conversation in private. I have a problem when people don't stand for the National Anthem. That's me. So, I, you know, I, I'd want a two-way conversation with anybody. And, you know, the National Anthem thing bothers me and, or the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sorry, and we say the pledge, and then we have the same people that want us to engage with them and have their same beliefs, not stand for the pledge. So, I, it's a two-way street, and I just think sometimes this is the wrong forum, only because, like I said, I was distracted the whole time and missed one of my seconds. We kind of chuckle when someone misses them, because like, what are you thinking about? You're in la-la land. And that's really what my problem was tonight, was like, okay, I really want to address these people, but I wanted to make sense and not be misconstrued or taken out of context because I've rushed through what I want to say. So, hopefully that made sense, and hopefully I didn't make too much of a fool of myself when I was trying to think what to say and pay attention to the business at hand. So, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Anyone else who'd like to add on to this topic or discuss other new business tonight?
I'll do it, Ben.
Sure, Mr. Stoughton?
So, you know, just because, my wife is sitting out there, so you can, you can talk with her, you can take me to a, you know, to one of my favorite team's games, and what you're not going to see me do when they score a touchdown or hit a homerun or, you know, dunk the basketball, you're not going to see me jump up and down in the stands. I am very reserved in my outward emotions on whether it's a game or whether it's white supremacy or hate groups. I mean, there's no part of me that hates anything about anybody. So, because we're not acting as you'd like us to act, doesn't make us wrong, right? I don't, I don't support hate groups, I don't support white supremacy, I don't support anything specific to hate. But you come to the podium and admonish me for that, be like the, be like, you know, the person sitting next to me, it's a fan, and, "Come on, man, get up and cheer." Well, I don't have to do that. I have, I have a right to, to, you know, deal and express my, my opinions about things overtly or covertly. So, of, of, there's nobody around this table that, that I believe supports hate groups or white supremacy. So, I, I'm really puzzled, you know, why we're, we're getting admonished. I want to go back to the night we, you know, we had many people up here to, you know, basically taking Mrs. Teener and her commentary. And I believe I even said, and I would have to go back and look, and I'm trying to reflect back six weeks ago, and I'm old and that's hard, but I think I may have even said something, and I'm paraphrasing, that I suspect there's probably something she said the meeting before that that maybe she wished she hadn't said. And, and the fact, I also mentioned for certain that she and I don't always agree on, on topics or things. But that doesn't make me, that doesn't make her right and me wrong and, or me right and her wrong. I mean, those are her opinions. So, really, at, at the, at the end of the day, you know, we're talking about the character of her, because, you know, whether you want to say you didn't really attack her character, probably had to be a pretty rough meeting for her to sit there. And, and again, I, you know, a lot of us around this table know Becky a little bit different than you do, so we merely were bringing to the surface to inform some of the, some of the good that, that you've not seen. You certainly saw something that you didn't care for in her commentary, and, and you spoke about that, but I wanted to certainly, and I think others that spoke on her behalf, wanted to let you know that she does, she does also do lots, lots of good. Again, do I agree with the commentary? Absolutely not. But at the end of the day, you know, whether I jump up and cheer and say, you know, you know, my team just scored a touchdown or not is really immaterial. I'm dealing with it myself personally. So, I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate what it is you stand for. But, you know, you're not going to expect a whole body of people, there's, you know, nine of us elected a president, we have a clerk, and we're all not in lockstep with how we're going to feel or how we're going to overtly react to things. But nevertheless, I want to be clear that, you know, much like Melody, you know, I don't stand for any hate group, I don't stand for hate, period, of anybody. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Anyone else who'd like to address some topic tonight? Yes, Mr. James?
Three comments, Alex, Stephanie, Jamie. I shared with you in that meeting that I encountered racism personally with two of my good African-American coworkers and friends, that I wanted to stay and fight with several members of the Ku Klux Klan. They convinced me that wasn't a good idea. And, and the final statement I made was, I'm going to oppose white supremacy and racism with every fiber of my being, and I will vote to make sure my vote will count toward anybody that's supporting that. Now, hopefully all of you will exercise your right to vote as well, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. James. Anyone else who would like to address? Yes, Mr. McDaniel?
I just, I think Tom summed up my feelings exactly, and I think we all, everyone I know here, I know everyone pretty well, and Tom said the same thing. There's no one here, in my mind, that would not condemn white supremacy, racism. To demand an answer at, at an open meeting, okay, you got one. We absolutely condemn racism and white supremacy. But I think Mr. Schoonover's point, sometimes this forum makes it very tough to respond to those type of questions and articulate exactly what you want to. We're in a world where every word you say can be taken out of context, misconstrued, maybe even exaggerated for someone else's purposes. So, we have to be careful. I am on the Law Committee, we are going to discuss this. Your points are very well taken, and you being here, standing in front of this body for the entire city to see what you have to say, is also a form of power that the city provides to our citizens. So, you can speak your, your positions and we can hear them. So, I do thank you for being here. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Uh, you certainly saw something that you didn't, uh, care for in her commentary, uh, and, and, and you spoke about that, but I wanted to certainly, and I think others that spoke on her behalf, wanted to let you know that she does, she does also do lots, lots of good. Again, do I agree with the commentary? Absolutely not. But at the end of the day, you know, whether I jump up and cheer and say, you know, you know, my team just scored a touchdown or not, is really im- im- immaterial. I'm dealing with it myself personally. So, um, I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate what it is you stand for. Um, but, you know, you, you're not going to expect a whole body of people, there, there's, you know, nine of us elected, a, the president, we have a clerk, and, and we're all not in lockstep with how we're going to feel or how we're going to overtly re- react to things. But, uh, nevertheless, I want to be clear that, uh, you know, much like Melody, you know, I don't stand for any hate group, I don't stand for hate, period, of anybody. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Anyone else who'd like to address, uh, some topic tonight? Yes, Mr. James?
Free comments, Alex, Stephanie, Jamie. I shared with you in that meeting that, um, I encountered racism personally with two of my good African-American coworkers and friends, that I wanted to stay and fight with, uh, several members of the Ku Klux Klan. They convinced me that wasn't a good idea. And, and the final statement I made was, I'm going to oppose white supremacy and racism with every, every fiber of my being, and I will vote to make sure my vote will count toward anybody that's supporting that. Now, hopefully all of you will exercise your right to vote as well, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. James. Anyone else who would like to address? Yes, Mr. McDaniel?
I just, I think Tom summed up my feelings exactly, uh, and I think we all, everyone I know here, I, I know everyone pretty well, and Tom said the same thing. There's no one here, in my mind, that would not condemn white supremacy, racism. To demand an answer, uh, at, at an open meeting, uh, okay, you've got one. We absolutely condemn racism and white supremacy. But, um, I think Mr. Schoonover's point, sometimes this forum makes it very tough to respond to those type of questions and articulate exactly what you want to. Uh, we're in a world where every word you say can be taken out of context, misconstrued, uh, maybe even exaggerated for someone else's purposes. So, we have to be careful. I am on the law committee, we are going to discuss this. Your points are very well taken, and, and you being here, standing in front of this body for the entire city to see what you have to say, is also a form of power that the city provides to our citizens. So, you can speak your, your positions and we can hear them. So, I do thank you for being here. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Is there anyone else who would like to address this this evening? Yes, Ms. Teener?
When I was growing up, my mom always said, "You never hate anything." However, I hate hate. I hate cancer. I hate, there's a lot of things out there I hate. I hate when people hate each other. Hate is ugly, and sometime, this is how we are today, is because of hate. And so, I mean, that, that's what all, is all I can tell you. And I hate all forms of it, I hate all different kinds of groups that have hate, and I think that's, what they're there for is hate. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Teener. Is there anyone else who would like to speak out this evening? Yes?
Mr. President, I mean, I'm happy to make an oral resolution that we condemn, um, you know, white supremacy and hate groups.
We have a-
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the floor to condemn white supremacy and hate groups. Is there a discussion? Please call the roll.
Sorry, I'm writing down the, give me one second, trying to get everything. Um, Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Outside of a tie, the president has not permitted to vote. However, I will, before I declare this motion passed, uh, also state that I am against any sort of hate group, white supremacy or racism as well, and, uh, will, will officially declare that this resolution passes nine to zero, and the city council of Lancaster officially stands against any such group, um, or thought or ideology. Is there anyone else who would like to address some topic tonight under new business? If not, then we will move on to the announcement of scheduled meetings.
Council will meet again October twenty sixth, the meeting after November ninth, the meeting after that, November twenty third, and finally, December fourteenth, all at six thirty PM here in council chambers. Upcoming committee meetings. Finance Committee, October twelfth, six PM here in council chambers. Water, water pollution, October fourteenth at eight AM at the Water, Water Pollution Control Conference Room. And I will see if the eighteen ninety seven room is available, and put a note out on that. Law Committee, October fourteenth at nine thirty AM at the Fairfield County Municipal Court Community Room. Finance, October twenty sixth, six PM here in council chamber, and Finance, November ninth, six PM here in council chambers.
Teresa? Thank you very-
I'm sorry. Good, um, could we, um, change the-
See if the eighteen ninety seven room is available?
If eighteen ninety seven room's available-
I will see if it's available.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any bills this evening? Yes, before that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
In the way of an announcement, and I know this conflicts with the law committee meeting, um, the city of Lancaster has been awarded, uh, a one point four million dollar grant, uh, specifically for the purpose of abating, uh, lead best- lead-based paint in, uh, owned or rented homes, uh, in which families with children under six live, and the regional HUD director from Chicago, Joseph Galvin, would be here in Lancaster on Wednesday morning at ten o'clock to make a presentation, uh, with regard to that, and I think, uh, that's been communicated to all of you via email, and we'd like to invite you to attend. And it will be somewhere in or around City Hall, so maybe the law committee could take a short recess during that time. I, I do not know how long this presentation is going to make, or going to take. He's traveling from Chicago to do it, um, so I, I assume it's, uh, interesting and relevant, uh, as, as to what, uh, we're doing. We, we were surprised to get this grant. Typically, those grants go to large cities, and there were only four awarded, uh, in, in the state of Ohio this year, uh, one to the city of Toledo, one to the city of Cincinnati, and one to Hamilton County, Ohio. So, uh, we were pleased and surprised, um, and, uh, it's a wonderful thing for the city of Lancaster. Uh, it's a three-year grant, uh, and we should be able to abate the lead in forty-two homes in and around Lancaster, so it's a, it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes?
I just want to reiterate, we can't spend that money for anything else but the abatement, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
It will basically be paid out to contractors, uh, to abate lead paint in homes.
Thank you. Another important thing, it's also rentals, it doesn't have to be owned by the owner living in the home. It's for any home that's available, and, but they have to have children, six or under, I believe, is one of the criteria. That's correct.
Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
There is one. PNC payable to MNCO for publication of legislation in the amount of sixty-eight dollars and five cents.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bill.
Second.
A motion in a second to pay the bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a need for an executive session? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
A motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
I have two for you.[1780.78]